Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. If you could please all rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischowiak.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer. Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item on this evening's agenda is to adopt our agenda.
I'll move adoption of the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And the very, we're going to combine the first two items, probably should have changed it on the agenda, but we're going to invite up the folks from the VFW Post 9625 and the auxiliary, and the American Legion Post 334 and the auxiliary, and I'm going to meet you out front with this. Well, welcome. Welcome all. It's so, so nice to have you all back in here again. See your faces. All right. Proclamation for Poppy Days. Whereas the Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 and auxiliary, that's all I needed from that one, and the Coon Rapids Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9625 and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary have adopted poppy as their commemorative symbol, and whereas the memorial poppy assembled by disabled veterans pays respectful tribute to those killed in war and also benefits the living veterans and their families, and whereas public donations for poppies fund rehabilitation programs within each local community that benefit veterans, their families, and ultimately our state and nation, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of poppies is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council hereby proclaim May 28th, 2021 to be Poppy Day, urging all citizens of Coon Rapids to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously and to wear a poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens proclaimed this 18th day of May, 2021. So maybe I could get you to introduce yourselves and let, let us know where they will be able to get poppies around town.
I'm Teresa Shumway. I'm a 32-year veteran of the Air Force, active duty, and I'm a member of the, past commander of the VFW 9625.
Where are you going to be?
Oh, we are going to be at County Market and hopefully Festival Foods.
I'm Diane Bullen. I'm second vice president and poppy chairman of Coon Rapids American Legion Auxiliary 334, and we will be at Cub on Hanson and Northdale, and then Walmart in Riverdale.
And that would be Friday and Saturday of this week. So, yep. Just so you know, those are the days to make your donations, come and say hi to everybody. I'm Anne Stefan. I'm the president of the Coon Rapids Auxiliary Unit 334. Honored to be in front here with my comrades here. We have the commander as well, and we just are so thankful that you give us this opportunity.
I am Sandy Livingston. I am a member of the Coon Rapids American Legion Auxiliary. I am also the adjutant for the post and a veteran myself.
Hi, I'm Dave Livingston, and I have the honor of being the commander of American Legion Post 334 and also a member of the American Legion Auxiliary. I am the first male member of our auxiliary, honoring my wife's service as a member of the United States Air Force.
We, we have poppies available. We have our gambling premises at Leonard's Bar and Grill on Coon Rapids Boulevard, and we have poppies available there as well, so at the pull tab booth, of course. So check that out.
Excellent. Thank you for all of that. We're not going to have it in by Poppy Day, but we're putting a sidewalk in front of Leonard's, so that's not tonight's agenda. Yeah. I just thank you all for your service. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you for being the first male auxiliary member. That's quite a thing. Way to cut the ice there. Yes?
May we also, may we also mention that May 29th, our Anoka County Veterans Council will be at Morningside and Bunker Hills Memorial for our memorial ceremony, and then, and on Memorial Day, we will be at Epiphany and Joyce Chapel, and then back to the Coon Rapids VFW for our services.
All right. Well, busy Memorial Day. That's nice. All right. Here is the one for the VFW.
Thank you, sir.
And I suppose, who do I give this to? Dan? Or, there you go.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in, and thank you all. Have less.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That is such a treat. All right. Next item on our agenda is we'd like to welcome the Anoka County Sheriff, James Stewart, for an update. Welcome, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having me tonight and allowing me to come spend some time with you. For the record, my name is James Stewart. It is my distinct privilege and honor to serve as the sheriff of Anoka County. As the elected chief law enforcement officer for Anoka County, I take my role and my oath to protect and serve our citizens and everyone very seriously. Those who pay attention and follow our sheriff's office know that we have a proud history of providing a wide array of diverse services to all of Anoka County, and you will also note that we always strive to exceed expectations and are very often sought out at the state and even the national level for our expertise and our commitment to model policies, community outreach, and numerous first-in-the-state programs and initiatives. Hopefully, you're also able to glean a sense of that commitment from our annual report that you should be receiving each spring that kind of outlines our organizational accomplishments for the past year. At the core of who we are is our mission statement, to protect and serve the community in a manner that preserves the public trust. Public trust has always been critically important to us, and that's why I'm here tonight, because the trust that we worked so hard for has been compromised and we continue to deal with the fallout. During a council meeting on May 4th, you were provided inaccurate and dangerously misleading information regarding a search warrant that our SWAT team executed for the Minneapolis Police Department. Sadly, it was then picked up by the media who further spread the inaccurate accounts. While this warrant service did not turn out as we would have wanted, it also did not play out as you were led to believe. So tonight, I greatly appreciate you allowing me to come, for actually asking for me to come and respond and provide our response to some of the things that were said, and to allow me to hopefully redirect you towards the truth. So you see, like you, I understand the significance of being an elected official, and I embrace, absolutely embrace, being transparent and accountable to the citizens that we serve and being transparent and accountable for my actions. The people we, the people that we serve do deserve that. And while it is not my intention to add any degree of division that has been imposed by another, I do feel it is critical for everyone to have complete and accurate information. As such, I would like to address the details of our SWAT warrant process, the specific warrant in question, as well as some of the commentary that was presented on May 4th. And some of this, I'll warn you in advance, might sound a little wordy and technical, and I apologize in advance for that, but the content was really developed based on a lot of the questions that I had of my own team, and so I wanted to be able to hopefully preemptively address some of those questions that you may have. Some of the basics of a warrant process for us. A typical SWAT warrant is executed following an extensive investigation that determines that the suspect being sought is expected to possess weapons and to be a dangerous threat to law enforcement. The details of the case are verified, and the SWAT call-out criteria are also evaluated against those case details. While the details must include supporting documentation that the suspect is likely to be at the address, again, best practices are always adhered to by our organization. The entire warrant must be reviewed and ultimately authorized by a judge once it has met all of those legal burdens. Simply put, we do not use SWAT unless there's a need, and in order to keep law enforcement or the public safe in an expected dangerous environment. So the basics of the warrant process for the event in question, we served a legally signed search warrant authorized for an Anoka County location. An Anoka County judge reviewed and approved the warrant that the Minneapolis Police Department had obtained. Since the judge had reviewed and signed off on the warrant, an additional full investigation of the case by the Anoka County Sheriff's Office would not be part of the established protocols due to resource, jurisdiction, as well as timing issues. The warrant application process requires that information known, established that the evidence or people sought are at the location listed in the warrant, and if the information provided to a judge meets the legal burden, we do review the information and we do complete an entire investigation independently. If anyone has specific questions regarding the investigation itself that ultimately convinced the judge to sign off on the warrant, I do recommend that you would contact the Minneapolis Police Department for those details. Investigations can be complex and take many months to develop, and with the checks and balances in place for obtaining a search warrant, it would not be appropriate for our agency to restart the investigation after a warrant had been signed. While no-knock warrants may be controversial, they do protect officers who are entering a location that is expected to be dangerous, and they also tend to reduce use-of-force incidents due to the element of surprise. In this instance, our SWAT team was requested by the MPD to secure the site at the given unauthorized warrant location and turn it over to them once it was deemed safe. That is a standard operating procedure, and that is what our team did during this event. It is not an unusual practice to provide these services for other agencies who are the investigating body, so that they can safely conduct their investigation. We have also declined many requests for other agencies just as a matter of them not meeting our criteria. This is where it gets a little, Councilman Johnson will be able to maybe appreciate this a little bit more than the rest of us.
I'll defer to the council.
But the, some of the warrant details, and I think it becomes relevant in the bigger picture, and again ties back to some of the questions that I had, but the facts to establish probable cause. The actual warrant states that the affiant or the officer had reason to believe that the suspect lived in Coon Rapids. The affiant contacted Coon Rapids Police and learned that on Monday, 2/1/2021, a few hours prior to the robbery, the suspect was involved in an incident in Coon Rapids during which he was attempting to take a luxury sports car for a test drive. The suspect started to cause such a disturbance that the Coon Rapids Police responded, as they have had frequent contact with him, and he is aggressive and noncompliant with police. It goes on to say that the Coon Rapids Police also advised that they had recent and repeated contact with the suspect at the house of his mother at the Butternut address. Continuing with the warrant and talking more about some of the elements for a nighttime search. A nighttime search outside the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. is necessary to prevent the loss, destruction, or removal of the objects of the search, or to protect the searchers or the public because, as the affiant is aware, that Coon Rapids Police have had frequent contacts with the suspect and this residence, which have resulted in aggressive combative resistance with law enforcement and the fact that there are two known unrecovered firearms that were in the possession of the suspect. So, bad information tied into our pre-investigation for the sheriff's office and our pre-warrant investigation details included that Anoka County records or the central repository for law enforcement data was, was viewed and showed the suspect living at the Butternut Street address with his mother. The Coon Rapids Police had contact with the suspect on 6/11/20 and 2/1/21, and for both reports used the Butternut address as the home address. For the incident on 6/11/20, CRPD cited the suspect using the Butternut address, and for the incident on 2/1/21, CRPD also used the Butternut address for the suspect's address, and this was just 10 days prior to the warrant being served. We have since learned that both incidents occurred after the suspect moved out of the Butternut address. CRPD provided information to MPD or Coon Rapids to Minneapolis, which served as the foundation for that warrant application. Chief Wise said on May 4th that the warrant went straight to ACSO. That is inaccurate. On 2/4/21, the MPD contacted CRPD, and I am assuming everybody's okay with me abbreviating as much as we can through that, via teletype and telephone, and requested CRPD to attempt to arrest the suspect for probable cause aggravated robbery at the address on Butternut. Due to the perceived dangers and high officer safety risk, CRPD did not attempt contact at the residence. Instead, CRPD advised MPD to contact the Anoka County Sheriff's Office for SWAT services. That referral decision led MPD to drafting the warrant application and asking for ACSO SWAT to assist them. Some other investigative details, an intel deputy with our office attempted to locate a property owner through the Anoka County Property Taxation website and found no record. He then contacted CRPD detective on 2/10/21 and discussed the investigation, the suspect target, and the given address. The CRPD detective and another officer were very familiar with the suspect. They discussed CRPD's prior dealings with the suspect and provided ACSO with a description of the physical layout of the residence. ACSO also learned that this warrant originally started as a teletype from MPD to CRPD for the probable cause aggravated robbery arrest pickup that I mentioned. CRPD told MPD that knowing the suspect, they were not going to just go to the residence and try to arrest him for robbery, as he was known to be noncompliant, aggressive, and combative. Again, thus, MPD drafted the warrant application and requested SWAT. ACSO also spoke to CRPD sergeant on 2/10/21 and arranged for two CRPD officers to attend the warrant briefing on 2/11/21. Our deputy and dispatch records confirm that two Coon Rapids officers were at the SWAT briefing and assisted at the SWAT, or excuse me, at the scene during the warrant service. Excuse me. On 2/12/21, the day after the warrant, the suspect's address was changed in the records management system. It was changed to show the warrant address as a former address with the suspect now having no permanent address. Excuse me. The system administrators were unable to tell us who made the change. It is important to note, it is important to note, please, that I have cited numerous elements of the case that include CRPD, and it in no way implies that any of the CRPD staff did anything wrong, and in fact, it appeared that they were acting in good faith as strong public safety partners for the sheriff's office. ACSO details of the actual warrant execution that day, so this is tying in, the SWAT actually, as it played out, the warrant was assigned to a SWAT sergeant by the SWAT commander on 2/9/21. That plan was discussed with the commander and our intel deputy, and the warrant service was approved on 2/10/21. The briefing at ACSO at 5:45 hours on 2/11/21, with two CRPD officers were present for the warrant briefing and the subsequent warrant execution. They arrived at a staging area at 06:17 and executed the warrant at 06:21. The occupants found at the address at the time were unrelated to the suspect and stated that they had been living in the address since May of 2020. There was, however, still mail at the address belonging to the suspect and the suspect's mother. Now, following the warrant and realizing that the family at the address may not have actual knowledge of the suspect, ACSO made several, what I would call humanitarian efforts, to help the family in this situation. While it was an MPD warrant and our only role was to provide a safe scene for the police department, our team members immediately repaired the exterior door due to the inclement weather. They went to the hardware store and got the necessary tools because they didn't want the family to be exposed to the weather conditions. They bought the family breakfast and sat down at the table with them and walked them through and explained the warrant process and how we ended up there that morning. Now, this wasn't done out of obligation or guilt, but it was done because it was the right thing to do, and we didn't want them having to wait for the city of Minneapolis to respond to assist them. Simply put, we felt bad for the family to be caught up in this situation, and we wanted them to know that. Unfortunately, the media choose to spin it, and so we were pictured as the intentional bad guys during a clearly unfortunate incident. Similarly, Chief Wise sadly chose to speak to this council about something he knew nothing about. On top of giving you bad information, the news outlets also picked it up again, which allowed them to further attack my office and our collective protectors without a valid foundation. I can't begin to wonder what the chief's motivation was or why he wouldn't reach out to ask those questions rather than relaying inaccurate information to you. As the city's elected officials, you and all of our citizens, those who elect all of us into these offices, deserve to know the truth. I have some excerpts from the Carol Levin story that I think are tragically relevant. Says, "This is an inexcusable mistake and really hard to comprehend," said Coon Rapids Police Chief Brad Wise. He told councilmembers his department was not given advanced warning of the raid and played no role in it. He actually also said that no Coon Rapids Police personnel were present, and we weren't involved at all. CRPD absolutely had advanced warning and played a significant role in it, and in fact, they were shoulder to shoulder throughout the process. The MPD cited Coon Rapids as the, in the warrant, as having recent and repeated contact with the suspect at the residence, and in preparing for the warrant, ACSO spoke with the CRPD sergeant, the detective, and officer regarding the warrant sus, excuse me, the warrant, the suspect, and the layout of the residence. The detective and officer went on to provide a description of the interior of the residence, while the sergeant provided two Coon Rapids officers to assist in executing the warrant. Those Coon Rapids officers, as I said, then assisted with the briefing and at the scene. The news story went on to say, "The detective from Minneapolis that investigated the case clearly failed to do his due diligence," Wise told city councilmembers, "and the Anoka County Sheriff's Office inexplicably just accepted Minneapolis's investigation on its face." That is also inaccurate. There was no foundation for his comments about the sheriff's office. ACSO SWAT is an award-winning team and is recognized statewide for its pre-warrant preparation, including scouting and research into the suspect and address, and in this specific case, ACSO had a significantly lesser role due to the warrant presented, having already been signed by a judge and had met the court's requirements. Nonetheless, we still researched Anoka County records, property taxation records, as well as spoke with MPD and CRPD about the investigation, the suspect, and the address. As mentioned, CRPD even provided ACSO with the layout of the residence. And the reason for the warrant was due to CRPD not feeling comfortable attempting a probable cause arrest pickup of the suspect at the location due to their prior dealings with him. At no point during any context with at least five members of the CRPD was there any information relayed that the suspect no longer lived at the residence. The foundations of the MPD warrant and subsequent SWAT review were supported by information obtained from CRPD. Based on the feedback, information, and foundational data provided by CRPD, I can say with confidence that if the Coon Rapids Police Department did have a SWAT team, they also would have executed that warrant. We understand that the events experienced by the Mathias family were concerning to both them and the greater community. That's not what we're about. We want things to always go as smoothly as possible. The checks and balances that are put in place to avoid investigations and investigative mistakes like this quite honestly failed, and it shouldn't have happened, but there is no perfect system in our imperfect world, and we will continue to refine and enhance our processes to mitigate misinformation in the future. The SWAT review process is in place, that we have reviewed our processes following this event to ensure that we, we did follow our established protocols and model policies and best practices. We also ensured that the signed warrant met the criteria for our SWAT team to even serve the warrant. If issues in our processes are identified, they have been and will continue to be swiftly dealt with, addressed, and reviewed. I tell our entire team at the sheriff's office to treat others as you'd want your own family to be treated, and in the end, I hope that the Mathias family at least got a glimpse into the hearts of our protectors as they got to spend some time in the aftermath and those interactions with our team. I have grown sadly to learn to expect this bias from some journalists trying to capitalize on unfortunate events, but our law enforcement professionals work very hard to protect and to serve our communities every single day, and they deserve better from the rest of us. And it saddens me that in a time when law enforcement is being attacked on every front, that we would have a law enforcement executive throw further fuel on the fire by spreading even more misinformation and needlessly damaging our community relations. Chief Wise told you that I have expected, I would have expected courtesy notification. That notification was delivered to his department numerous times, and I would have appreciated the same level of respect before he drew his own conclusions about this case and went public against our office. His repeated statements about CRPD not being aware, not being involved, or not being a participant were all simply misrepresentations. If my office makes a mistake, we own it, and if I make a mistake, I own it. None of us are perfect, and mistakes can and will be made, but if a mistake is made, we need to study it, we need to learn from it, so it never happens again. Excuse me. We have always evaluated how we do business and how we can improve our services so that our citizens are served to the absolute best of our ability, and I trust that the city of Coon Rapids feels the same way. But this is not about Coon Rapids, and it's not about the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. As I stated from the start, this is about trust. You deserve to know that the Anoka County Sheriff's Office remains committed to doing the right thing with excellence, and we do. And the citizens of Coon Rapids and all of Anoka County deserve to know that we remain committed to their safety and the safety of their families, and we do. And likewise, every member of the law enforcement community deserves, deserves to let the truth prevail, so that the community relations can be rebuilt, and so we can all start working together for more positive futures. Our children and our grandchildren deserve that we all try harder. ACSO has not wavered in any of these commitments, nor will we. We have a strong history of working collaboratively with all of our communities, and that commitment remains and is stronger than ever, and I greatly appreciate my relationships all around the city of Coon Rapids and with the Coon Rapids City Council. Likewise, the entire sheriff's office greatly appreciates our ongoing relationship and partnership with the hardworking and professional team members of the Coon Rapids Police Department, and tonight I thank you for allowing me to be here to share the facts behind the incident so that the misinformation doesn't prevail and continue to spread fear in our community. You and our citizens deserve to know. Thank you, and I will stand for questions or comments.
So Sheriff, my, to just kind of cut right to the chase, my only question was, how is this not going to happen again? What's going to be done differently so that this doesn't happen again? I mean, you know I support you and I support the Sheriff's Department, and gosh, I think you're all honorable and great protectors. I'd just like to know, how, what are we doing, what are we going to do different so this doesn't happen again?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, just for a little background, this is the SWAT debrief incident from just that one warrant, just for the SWAT action. So we, I just, I bring this as a visual aid. You're welcome to look at it. I'm not willing to release it, but you're welcome to look at it, because I want you to understand when I say we don't take it lightly, we don't, and that's why we have an award-winning team that's been recognized for many, many years. Having said that, I think some of the specifics are, you know, garbage in, garbage out. All of the information that was being obtained from all the multiple sources appear to be garbage, to, to follow that, that thread, and so the information wasn't as effective as we needed. So what, what we have done is a, and again, we checked all the boxes, and at the end of the day, the judge authorized it based on the information in, in that warrant, but nonetheless, as I've said before, we've declined warrant services and requests for other agencies because we just didn't feel it met the criteria. This one did appear to, and, and, or we wouldn't have done it. What we're doing internally is asking more pointed questions, more specific follow-up, and when it's our investigation, and most of our stuff is internal when it relates to the warrants, and of course, the dynamic or the, the SWAT call-outs that don't involve warrants are a completely different situation, but focusing on the warrants, our investigations, again, we, you walked down the hall, you talked to the detective, and you know how it played out. When they come from outside agencies, and especially outside counties, we have, have very, I think we've done a good job of asking pointed questions. The list of pointed questions is going to be more specific, more involved, and require more follow-up, and we're also doing a better job coordinating with our analysts, and not just talking to our analysts, but making sure that the analysts reach out to other analysts. And so I guess the, the short version, too late, I know, would probably, would probably be, would probably be to say we're going to cast a wider net, and we're going to try to gather more information.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Johnson?
So I, Sheriff, I thank you so much for coming in and, and talking to us, and I want to say a few things just with respect to you and the SWAT team that...
Sheriff, I thank you so much for coming in and talking to us, and I want to say a few things just with respect to you and the SWAT team that helped Minneapolis attempt to execute this warrant effectively. First of all, with respect to you, I appreciate the transparency, and I also appreciate you agreeing to meet with me even before this to just talk about this, because this is my ward where this happened in, and it affected some constituents, and so we take it very seriously. And after meeting with you, and I met separately too with Chief Wise, and after meeting with him, I'm comforted by the fact that some of the breakdowns in communication that may have existed here are being taken seriously and are being addressed, but there's an important need for clarification on some of these things. So thank you for coming in. With respect to the SWAT team members, you know, I'm in a unique situation in some respects because I've actually been to Fort Ripley during the training that is done by the tactical officers and the Tactical Officers Association as a prosecutor, and been so impressed with the Anoka County SWAT team, the city of Anoka SWAT team, the collaboration between and among themselves. And I've seen the briefings and how they approach going in. So I know you guys take this really seriously, both before and after action. I do want to ask a couple of points of clarification, just so that I make sure I have this right in my head. But my understanding is, and please tell me if you have different information, is that the Coon Rapids officers that responded were patrol officers, and they weren't actually involved in the entry. Is that right? They were peripheral to the entry?
Correct, councilman, yeah. They would not be without that tactical background, and we wouldn't expect them to be put into a dangerous situation.
They were there for securing the perimeter and stuff like that.
Correct, it's typically wherever we go, whether it's in the county or we've assisted outside. Bad timing on that tickle.
No, I understand.
We typically always try to have uniforms present...
Yep.
...to create that sense of understanding. Sometimes in a, you know...
Need a water?
I think...
You're good?
If, yeah.
You have three of them coming, so...
Timing is everything. But we do try to have uniforms present to make sure that neighbors and anyone else understands this is a law enforcement operation, and it's the good guys, we're okay.
And I appreciate that. And I know that Chief Wise separately communicated to us that there was some additional knowledge that he had learned after our last meeting and had shared that with us as well. I have to ask this question though, because you quoted from the warrant, which I really do appreciate, because I haven't had a chance to review it in any detail, and that warrant was obviously written by a Minneapolis officer, sworn officer from Minneapolis. And it appears that it relies on some contact reports from Coon Rapids. There was this kind of emphasis in the warrant about, and I'm probably getting the words wrong a little bit here, but repeated, and it creates a little bit of confidence. I mean, I understand why Judge Fitzpatrick signed the thing, given the tone of it and the manner in which it's written. Has there been any that you can share, follow-through from Minneapolis? I mean, a mea culpa? Or anything like that, that they've reached out to you to explain, you know, how they got it wrong? Because we all, in the criminal justice profession, know that addresses in police reports or contact reports can come in a varied set of ways. They can come from a driver's license that might be out of date, they can come from somebody just saying, "Hey, I live at that address," or whatever. So did you learn anything more about their breakdown on their end?
We have, to my knowledge, I have not had any contact, and to my knowledge, they have not done any follow-up.
Okay. And I don't mean to put you on the spot on this, do you know if they ever filed that warrant?
I have asked the question, I have not heard the answer. So to my, excuse me, to my knowledge, they had not.
Okay. So one of the things that is, I think, important, every now and then, you know, people in public service don't rise to their own expectations, or they don't rise to the expectations of the community. And I'm not actually suggesting that that happened here with either Coon Rapids or with the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. I am kind of suggesting that that may have happened here with respect to Minneapolis and what was presented to us. And the reason I say that is, when I look in our Odyssey Court system, okay, and I'm looking at it kind of right now, I see that, and this is the publicly available one, the public can take a look at this, on August 24th, 2020, this fellow had a sentence for fleeing a peace officer in a motor vehicle, that's a felony, and for a motor vehicle theft, also a felony. And in here, it lists his address being in St. Paul, not Coon Rapids. And that's back August of 2020. And then it also says that he's got, you know, part of his conditions are to contact your diversion officer and to contact your probation officer as directed. So there were actually people in the criminal justice system that were supposed to have tabs on this individual. And I didn't hear anything or see anything in the warrant about efforts by Minneapolis to reach out to them. And so that concerns me, because it seems like there was information available to Minneapolis, but when I saw that Carol Levin story, I didn't see anybody from Minneapolis come forward. I didn't see them make contact with anybody from Minneapolis. So the takeaway that I have from this is, you know, Coon Rapids is concerned about what happens in its community. You know, Anoka County Sheriff is concerned, and its department and its office is concerned about what happens in the community. I can't explain Minneapolis. And so when I think of positive things that might come out of an unfortunate event, and I've mentioned this to you, but I want to do so publicly, I wonder if, especially in no-knock and especially nighttime warrants, if pulling together a more robust multidisciplinary team might be helpful. Have somebody from the county attorney's office, or even reach out to the city attorney's office, which we have here, that others might not, to help do things like a court records check and that kind of due diligence. Also, consider tapping social workers, either with the county, and Coon Rapids is unique in that we now have a social worker that we share with Blaine, because we know when we execute these warrants and we're looking for one person, or maybe two people, that that might impact others, whether it be in neighboring buildings, or it may be in the same family, but they may be innocents in the process. And having that multidisciplinary team there ready to act, rather than relying on the good hearts and minds of your department to do the right thing and follow through, which they did. And that was an important piece of why I wanted to meet with you, and I appreciate it. Might be a way that we can approach these higher-intensity warrants a little better in the future. What I don't want to be lost from this, though, in all of this, is that the individual who was the subject and target of the warrant is the one that set all this in motion. I mean, but for serious allegations, felony allegations, and a serious public safety risk, this never would have happened, and that individual is the one that's responsible for it. It's a tough thing that we have to do sometimes in the criminal justice system to use these kinds of tools. I appreciate the care the sheriff's office took in talking with this family afterwards, and that may be why, in large part, we didn't hear about it until Carol Levin got hold of the story and decided to make a story but not tell the full story. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Johnson, if I may respond. The multi-jurisdictional approach to the review, wow, I think is a good idea, and we talked a little bit more about that offline. I think it's very, could be a very powerful tool. I also, just for everyone's edification on it, the other side is, it's not uncommon for us to receive a warrant at 5:00 or 6:00 p.m. on a Friday with an expectation that it be served before Saturday morning. So sometimes the timeliness is a very critical element of these things as well. Point well taken, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff Stewart, I appreciate you coming and sharing a lot of the information. I had a couple of the same questions that Councilmember Johnson had. I had a couple of other additional ones, so I appreciate that you talked about helping the residents and fix that exterior door. Who is responsible, and have we or is somebody helping that family with the interior doors, the impact from the warrant?
Yeah, absolutely, Councilmember. At the core, it's always the responsibility of the investigating agency. And so in this case, it would be the city of Minneapolis. I'm looking at the monitor, I don't know where to look.
Down somewhere.
It would be the investigating agency's responsibility to play that cleanup role, if you will, or to do the risk management and the follow-up. We didn't want them to have to wait for all of those elements to kick into place, not knowing the timeliness of the city of Minneapolis. And that's why they took those initial steps to at least have makeshift fixes put into place, but it would be the investigating agency.
Okay, and do you know if Minneapolis has fulfilled their obligation?
I don't know.
Okay, okay, I think that'd be interesting. Then the other thing I wanted to think about, as a former auditor and IT auditor and all of that, you know, that when you noted that the address was changed the next day in the system, I would really ask Logis or somebody, they should be able to tell you who did that change. And for me, I think that's a good thing, because it means that it's not going to happen again, because...
Correct.
The data is getting updated. But that should be data that's available to us, and that should be kind of commended in the way that that person or whoever made that change can make sure that we got the data right and it wouldn't perpetuate any sort of information. And to that, are you or have you taken any steps within the sheriff's office to make sure that there is just general communication about the need to make sure that, you know, so if you've got access to that person's record and information, that we are keeping things as current as possible? You know, if we don't have the time to go do all of the cases and the court records research, you know, if those case officers are making sure that their contacts are up to date, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
Are you doing anything internal that way, I guess?
Yeah, absolutely. And the struggle, of course, is always, as I said before, kind of garbage in, garbage out, and we don't know. Within the sheriff's office, we always tell our deputies, you know, ask, "Is this your current address?" It's something that simple that can make a difference when somebody's booked to the jail, regardless of what ID they present, they're asked, "Is this your current address?" And sometimes, they're going to say yes, they might, the suspects may provide bad information, which gets entered into the system, or sometimes officers just might take it at face value and write down what's on the driver's license. So we certainly want the best information going into the system all the time, and to make sure that those, the most recent information is listed as the current address and the most recent addresses.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ray Robert?
So you said, "When we make a mistake, I own it, we own it." I appreciate that, thank you for that. I also appreciate when a mistake is apologized for, which it sounds like it was with the breakfast and so on. And I ultimately also appreciate when it's corrected to prevent a future mistake. So the wrong house was entered at the end of the evening. And so what do you believe was, number one, the root cause? And secondly, what do you think is the most important thing that could be done, like the one most important thing that could be done differently if another search warrant like this came out?
Absolutely. So the root cause is bad information. I mean, there's just, there's no two ways around that. And the investigating body is...
And that was a wrong address from Minneapolis Police, is that what it was?
That's who put it in the warrant.
Okay.
Ultimately, it's the warrant application that's going to go before the judge to become the warrant that we serve. That is what needs to have the proper information with the proper research done on the front end. Again, our team reviews the data that's presented to us to make sure that, yes, it appears to be accurate, and yes, it meets the criteria. But ultimately, the investigating body needs to be the ones to make sure they're getting good and valid information. And then, excuse me, the part two, what's being done to prevent it, as I said before, from our agency, and I can't speak for everyone, but we're making sure much more pointed questions and a much more broad-sweeping approach using the analysts on a greater scale.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We good?
Thanks for coming in.
Sure, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for the water.
You can take it with you.
As a for instance, most of our meetings are over by now. All right, well, we're up to item four, approval of the minutes from the May 4th meeting.
You can make a motion to approve the minutes. These May 4th meeting.
Second. Motion by Carlson, second by Griszkowiak. Discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. Apparently, we're all waiting to see what the sheriff had to say, huh? All right, and we are up to item, we're up to our consent agenda. Items five through 10 are all on the consent agenda. The first one is to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license for Healing Touch RJLLC. So we're looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Healing Touch RJLLC located at 1635 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest, Suite 230, pending a successful background investigation. Item six is to approve final payment to Northwest Asphalt for Project 19-11 Miscellaneous Trail Reconstruction. So we're looking to approve final payment to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $86,786.88 for Project 19-11 Miscellaneous Trail Reconstruction. And item seven is to approve a certification of mortgage satisfaction, 8500 Evergreen Boulevard. And this was actually something that the EDA took up just prior to our council meeting. So with this, we'll be approving the certification of a mortgage satisfaction for the property at 8500 Evergreen Boulevard. Item eight is to recommend new appointments to the Charter Commission. State statutes require that a minimum of seven and no more than 15 persons serve on the Charter Commission, and currently, the Charter Commission has nine members. And when they met in 2020 in November, they expressed an interest in adding two members. Two of our residents, Shalonda Gordon and Steve Wells, have expressed an interest and have submitted applications. So we're looking to recommend to the Chief Judge for the 10th Judicial District that Shalonda Gordon and Steve Wells be appointed to serve a four-year term each effective May 2021, with said term to expire in May of 2025. Item nine is to adopt Resolution 21-58, appointing Olu Oriasanya to the Safety Commission. And I am just going to apologize right now, I was going to try and get that pronunciation Olu submitted an application expressing interest in the Safety Commission in July of 2020, but due to COVID-19 and the frequency in which a Safety Commission meets, the first meeting of the Safety Commission that the applicant was able to attend was September 20th of 2020. After meeting and reviewing his application, Safety Commission was prepared to recommend appointment to the Safety Commission. However, Olu was placed on a military deployment for the months of October 2020 through... However, Olu was placed on a military deployment for the months of October 2020 through April 2021. He is now back and wishes to serve on the Safety Commission. After this appointment, there remains four vacancies on the Safety Commission. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 21-58, appointing Olu Funzo Orisanya, I'm sorry, to the Safety Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2024. And item 10, which is our last item on the consent agenda, is to ratify temporary expansion of liquor licensing to allow for expanded outdoor service in an attempt to assist businesses impacted by COVID restrictions. State create, staff created a temporary outdoor dining policy which provides guidelines under which our liquor license holders can expand their premises. Staff has verified that all requirements have been met and approved. Temporary expansions for the following locations until October 31st, 2021, or unless ended earlier by action of the city council or upon termination of the city's state of emergency. We're looking to, for Alloy Brewing Company, 2700 Coon Rapids Boulevard, and Broadway Bar and Pizza, 3420 129th Avenue Northwest. So we're looking to ratify the temporary expansion of liquor license premises as outlined above through October 31st, 2021, or unless ended earlier by action of the city council or upon termination of the city's state of emergency declared on March 17th, 2020. And that is the complete consent agenda.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Just a thank you to everyone who's applying to be on a commission and also move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Demmer's-
Even Wells. I'll even thank Wells.
Motion by Demmer, second by Carlson. Any discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I mean, I'm looking at the Wells application right now. And he gets asked a question that says, please rank in order the commissions on which you wish to serve. And he checks, number one, charter, and then he doesn't check anything else. He doesn't rank them. I'm not sure that he followed the application.
I think he was drafted, actually.
I suppose, if he passes a background check. All right.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Regarding appointments to our commissions, is there any limitons to how many commissions a resident can serve on? If, as long as they're there, they can go on as many as they want?
Mayor and council, not officially. You know, we have had members historically have served on several commissions. I think it is something we have had discussions with candidates before about, you know, the number that they can theoretically serve on, you know, especially if they're on one of the more active commissions. Some of these commissions only meet handful of times a year, and so, like charter, for example, even civil service now don't meet very frequently. There's some others in that boat. Whereas if you're on planning commission and parks commission and something like that, that would probably be a bit of a conflict, so.
I got it.
It's a part of it. There's nothing official that says you can't serve on, you know, X amount.
Thank you.
I think former council member Wells was just worried that if he ranked anything else, we'd put him on a different commission. We knew he'd be back.
Yeah, that's right.
Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. And we are on to item 11, consider Resolution 21-13 sub nine, awarding a contract for the East Water Treatment Plant HVAC improvements. Mr. Hammer, I saw you there on the Zoom. Do you want to hit the highlights or do you want me to read your discussion points here?
Mr. Mayor, council, briefly, I'll just let you know, we had a great grouping of bids. We are checking in under engineer's estimate. It is a new contractor we haven't worked with, but they're moving into the area and they come with good recommendations. So we would be looking to award the contract to Burn Boiler and Mechanical in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand eight-hundred dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
And they're moving into the area? I saw they were all coming all the way from Fargo. So they're expanding their market a little bit?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hammer or somebody want to put this forward?
Aye, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
I figure someone from Fargo knows heating, right? So move to adopt Resolution number 21-13 sub nine, awarding a contract to Burn Boiler and Mechanical, Inc. in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand eight-hundred dollars for the East Water Treatment Plant HVAC improvements.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Carlson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion carries. Sorry, Councilmember Geisler, that Zoom delay, I think, actually, you probably would have had.
I know.
Item 12 is to consider planning case 21-9, consider adoption of ordinance 2245, a zone change from general commercial to moderate density residential 114 XX Robinson Drive. This is the parcel over there behind the Wells Fargo Bank that we discussed at the last meeting. Does anybody need another show on this one? Grant's back there. All trimmed up and everything looking good. He's already presenting.
I'm ready, Mr. Mayor.
And I don't think anybody has any questions, so.
Okay.
Aye, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
In planning case 21-9, move that the city council adopt ordinance 2245, approving the proposed zoning change from moderate density residential, to moderate density residential based on the stated findings.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Griscoviac. Any discussion?
Looks like a good plan.
Looks like a very good plan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item 13, which is to consider Resolution 21-4 sub eight, accepting plans and specifications for sidewalk expansion and authorizing solicitation of bids. We are slowly but surely getting those little gaps in along Coon Rapids Boulevard. And as I mentioned earlier, one of these is that little segment in front of Leonard's. And then it looks like one is actually kind of filling the gap between Coon Rapids Boulevard and the new apartments down there. Spring House, is that there?
Correct.
On Springbrook Drive. You know, that'll be kind of nice with those motels there, too. Put a little walking trail in there. So three spots on the north side of Coon Rapids Boulevard and Springbrook Drive between Coon Rapids Boulevard and 94th. Counsel, does anybody need anything on this, or Your Honor?
Aye, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
I'm always excited to see us filling these gaps. Anytime I, like, run on there and you kind of just lose the sidewalk for, you know, 100 feet, and then it comes back, I think, oh, man, can't wait to vote on one of these. So I will move to adopt Resolution number 21-4 sub eight, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the sidewalk expansion project.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider planning case 21-8, consider Resolution 21-55. We've changed the zoning. Now we're looking to change the land use, commercial mixed use to moderate density residential 114 XX Robinson Drive. And I guess the, kind of the highlight of this one is that the planning commission, one resident asked about tree preservation along the property line, but staff explained that screening will not, is included at the time of the site plan review. And then the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed land use amendment because they obviously also think it's a good plan, so. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Fornelius?
Just to clarify, I guess, for maybe the public that may be watching. So as the council is aware, the previous action that you took was to rezone the property. The, this particular item relates to changing the land use designation, which is in our comp plan. So we always want to have our comp plan and our zoning in sync. And so that's what this action would accomplish this evening.
Councilmember Geisler, did you have something?
Yep, I was going to say, yep, we have to keep things in sync. It's kind of required by the state. So I would make a motion in planning case 21-9 to recommend approval of Resolution 21-55, approving the proposed land use amendment from commercial mixed use to moderate density residential based on the three stated findings.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item 15 is to consider a purchase agreement and Resolution 21-56, amending the revolving construction fund. And we're looking to make the first acquisition to clear the way for our 610 connection at East River Road. And we're looking to acquire the property at 1,009 93rd Lane Northwest. And it'll be necessary with the realignment and the future there, so. Do we, is there anything we want to do on this, or?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
I make a motion that the council adopt Resolution 21-56, amending the revolving construction fund. Approve the purchase agreement, authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the purchase agreement, and authorize staff to execute documents as necessary to close on the property.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower, second by Carlson. I'll take it that we have enough information. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. And then item 16 is to adopt Resolution 21-57, accepting the 2021 grant for a full-time auto theft investigator, and adopt Resolution 21-59, amending the 2021 budget. Got great talking points, but got the guy right here, so you want to hit any highlights?
Well, this opportunity came to us through the Minnesota Commerce Department. We have historically ran the auto theft task force for Anoka County, and now Fridley is going to be taking over administration of that grant. Our agency partnered with the city of Anoka to meet the threshold for the amount of auto theft-related incidents to qualify for the grant and applied for the grant. It's a two-year grant for fiscal year 2022 and 2023 with potential to expand or to extend that up to another additional three years. Fridley also applied for it. They combined with, I believe, Spring Lake Park and Columbia Heights. I know Spring Lake Park. There were three of them. I'm not sure which ones. And they were also awarded the grant, so we'll probably be working quite closely with them. The grant's in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars a year with some additional, a few thousand additional dollars for some training and a conference and things like that that are funded by the state. So with that, we'd be asking to add an additional officer to our authorized strength during the course of the grant. And when that grant comes to close, we'll contract as required, but.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to make a comment about the budget adjustment portion of this. The way it's stated in the memo is accurate in the sense that what's, the position that's getting created is an investigator, which will be a higher-paid, more experienced senior officer. What it will be backfilled with, though, is a new police officer, kind of at the starting end of that scale. And so while it says up to eighty thousand dollars may be needed to cover the cost of the new position, there is a savings by the position that will be created. The way we budget it or the way we expressed it in the budget memo was just worst-case scenario, I would say, over that two-year period. But I did want to let council know that there will be a savings when we hire the new officer, who obviously will be at year one or two, perhaps, on the step plan. And with that, as we've progressed through our police officer hiring plan the last few years, staff was anticipating a request to council for two new officers next year. And so with this, that would help alleviate one of the positions that we would seek out because we'd already be one officer ahead of where we expected to be this year.
We participated in the auto theft investigation grant several years ago. We're in some sort of a joint task force. I recall one of our officers actually won, like, a state award or something for something over recovery of vehicles. Wasn't, am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, we've, in Anoka County, all of Anoka County participates in the auto theft task force. We've administered it in Coon Rapids for the last, I don't know how many years. It's been a long time. And Chad Duxton, one of our detectives, the detective that won the award that you're speaking of, is actually the person that we've selected, should this be approved, to be our dedicated auto theft investigator. And I have to say that he already has probably 70% of his caseload already is auto theft-related as it is. So this is just money coming in to put another cop on the road for us and for him to largely do what he's doing. And I won't, not my words, but when I spoke with Commerce about it, they, they're excited to give it to us because we have Chad Duxton. And in their words, we have probably the top auto theft investigator in the state. So not my words, their words. So, and I agree. He's won several awards, and he's got a passion for this, and it's putting his skills to good use.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Between Detective Duxton and this grant, citizens have been well-served for many years with this. And he's, Investigator Duxton just has done some incredible things and has truly led the way with auto theft investigation. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I, I recommend, Mr. Mayor, we approve Resolution 21-57, authorizing a 2021 agreement with the Minnesota Commerce Department, accepting a grant to fund a full-time auto theft investigator through June 30th, 2023, and approving Resolution 21-59 to amend the 2021 budget.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Johnson. And you knew it was going to go. You're too young, but Ted Baxter used to get real serious. He'd take his glasses off and he'd talk to you. I knew it was getting serious when Pat took his glasses off.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
For people watching at home, I just want to point out that we have an award-winning detective for finding stolen cars. So if you're considering stealing a car, I would just say that this is a good recommendation not to.
Stay out of Coon Rapids.
I'm sure those guys watched the meeting.
No, right? Lots of overlap there between watching city council meetings and stealing cars, I'm sure.
Yeah, let's check our demographics here. All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Would we also have to make a motion to raise the number of sworn officers from 69 to 70? Or is that kind of encompassing into the agreement?
It's included with the resolutions that you're passing. The intent would be to authorize strength from 69 to 70. It's good to state that for the record, just for clarity.
All right. Anything, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion carries. We obviously don't have anybody in-house for open mic. Do we have anybody on Zoom for open mic?
Let me just double-check. There are no public attendees.
Okay. And I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. And we want to cover another business this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson?
Because it was warm last weekend, and it's been warm the last few days, I've actually gotten my first question of, are we going to open the Splash Pad this year? And do you have any insight that you can share with the community on that?
Sure. Mayor and council, yes. The, the timing of the opening of the Splash Pad, other than last year, has always been the Friday before Memorial Day. So yes, very soon Splash Pad will be open for use. It opened last July, sort of during COVID concerns, and continued to be open through Labor Day. And we had no issues up there with COVID-related issues that we had any concerns about. So certainly, as things are progressing and opening up more, we feel very comfortable opening that up.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. We don't have any, our first meetings in the park will be after our next council meeting.
Correct.
So we'll have to cover those tonight. And we'll have another council meeting the first of, the second, first of June, I believe it is. But then June 3rd is when our concerts in the park kick off. So those will be fun. I don't know. Any other business? Mr. Stenwiddell? Oh, who wants to go? Councilmember Demmer?
So over the years, you've heard me talk about the biomedical sciences program over at Coon Rapids High School. Four years ago, they actually also added an engineering magnet. So the Coon Rapids High School has an engineering program in it as well. The thing about four years ago is the first class to go through it is now all the way through it. And tonight was the first capstone presentations for that engineering program. And so I just wanted to recognize the school for having both biomedical sciences and engineering magnets. It's as near as I can tell, completely unique for a public institution, public high school. And it's great to see that, that program get even- school, and that's great to see that, that program get even, even stronger. And they got to present, they actually got to go and have an auditorium and they, you know, had, had all the family members there, and so they got to finish off kind of a more traditional capstone presentation.
Wonderful. Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and Council, I will mention one fun event that's happening before our next council meeting, which is the drive-in movie, will be held at Boulevard Plaza, which is attached to the Coon Rapids Ice Center at 11,000 Crooked Lake Boulevard, the movie this, on the 28th, is playing with fire, it'll start at approximately 8:30, you may want to get there a little earlier to get a good spot out on the lawn, and the start time obviously coincides with when it gets dark enough to show a movie on a screen, so take a look for that, there's information on our city website.
Be clear that with the fire department, the movie is playing with fire.
I'm sure there's a great message in there somewhere.
All right, so it's Friday night, Friday night, the 28th, all right, excellent. Any other business to come before council?
No. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We're adjourned.